Michael, 2447 comes out of an audit, one of the findings of the State Board of Accounts to create a redevelopment department. This is state, this is required by the state, correct, Michael? And the entire ordinance is state language.
Yes, Counselor Pettit, this was out of the state statute and this was required in response to a corrective action plan that we filed with the State Board of Accounts.
So those will show up later on in the agenda.
Thank you.
That's all.
Street Department, Mrs. Yuzlak can report, Steve, you can provide.
I'll just give a quick update. Our department is currently still maintaining the parks. We look after them every day. We're already, we're prepped for winter. The plow trucks are ready to go. We've been brining the streets in anticipation of snow. Other than that, that's, that's it for now.
Great. And then the street paving has stopped due to the weather now.
Correct.
Time of year?
Correct.
Thank you. Elections, public relations, and town beautifications, Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We have our meeting on December the 16th at 3:00 PM. And at that meeting, we are expected to have all of the estimates in for all of the Gateway signs.
Oh, wonderful.
Yep, and that's all.
Environmental affairs, Mr. Pettit.
I don't have a report. I will defer to Vice President Neal and Mr. Lake later on.
Okay. Personnel policy and employee benefits, Counselor Hardaway.
Yes, we are currently reviewing the applications for the director position. And then, once the review is complete, we will call in and then request interviews. Also, there will be some postings coming up as soon as I talk to Mrs. Pettit about those postings for the community centers' maintenance positions.
And the director position you referred to was the Parks Director?
Parks Director. Sorry about that.
No, thank you. Moving on to economic development, Mr. Pettit.
You skipped public safety.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I am sorry. Public safety, Hardaway.
I will call a end-of-year meeting with Nusis and Yerga just to see if there are any outstanding and then to discuss 2025, anything upcoming. Okay? Thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you.
President Bella.
Mr. Pettit.
Economic Development, Mr. President. Under the consent agenda, we maybe kind of glossed over it. If you don't mind, may I?
Go ahead.
The meeting for the Town Council has, as a part of a memo from Council President Bella, has been moved to the 30th. Therefore, as RDC President, ladies, I'm going to call an RDC meeting for 5:00, excuse me, 5:30 on the 30th before the council meeting is at 6:30, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it's just RDC at 5:30.
Thank you. Utility liaison.
No report at this time.
Okay. Parks and Dean and Barbara White, Community Center.
Yes, Mr. President, we had a meeting last night. Counselor Haynes Edwards and Counselor Hardaway and myself, staff, and Mr. Griffin were there. Again, there are some actions coming up later on. One of the items, we took action on in instructing Lisa to do a not-to-exceed figure of $10,000. She's getting some quotes on fencing the patio area. Unfortunately, much to my surprise, people are driving on the patio, Lisa.
Yes, they are.
So it's going to be a wrought iron, I think it was wrought iron style, wasn't it? Four feet high, maybe?
I think we're doing six.
Six?
Six foot.
So we, committee approved that, not to exceed $10,000. Michael advised us under state law, we could do that with that. There's also an outstanding loan, counselors, that there's an agenda item where we are going to, the committee agreed recommending the council pay it back with $250,000.
Just 200?
Just 200, I'm sorry, just 200 of the 650 to come out of the food and beverage tax. That item will be later on in the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that, I have one more thing, Keisha? I think that was it. If I think of it, I'll bring it back up.
Very good, thank you. Special committees, abandoned and blighted properties.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did meet on December the 6th with our code enforcement officers and Attorney Ricardo. And we are getting better acquainted with what is taking place, who, what roles are being dispersed and how we move about what falls exactly under blighted, what falls exactly under abandoned. So I will ask that we continue to get a little more grace as we figure this out so that we can move accordingly and make sure that our homes are up to code and our residents are pleased. That is all for that.
Thank you. Do you want to continue on with your semi-quintcentennial committee?
We are approaching 2025, and so we will begin getting a committee together with residents included so that we can begin planning for this huge semi-quintcentennial celebration, which will have a series of events leading up to one huge event.
Super.
That is all.
Special town projects, I know there have been some. Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you, President Bella. We had our annual Christmas tree lighting this past Friday. It turned out to be a spectacular event. I hope everyone was able to enjoy all of the pictures and the video of Santa Claus dancing. But the event was larger and better, and each year we're planning on growing it and making it even better. And we did have a winner for our decorating the tree. Maryville Preschool won the tree voting contest. They did receive over half the votes, so we're looking to have them out on the 30th to accept their prize. Also, the holiday home decorating contest, we have eight homes that are participating. Those homes will be posted on the website and voting starts for those homes on Friday.
Excellent.
Mr. President, if I could go back to Parks, I did find my item. If you don't mind, it's kind of important. It's a little bit of money, that's all. As you might remember, we retained the Arsh Group to do a new park and recreation five-year master plan as well as a park impact fee, and Lisa is on that committee. There is a park impact fee committee. As of right now, the park impact fee fund, as of October 31st, was at $282,493.78, which can be used in the Parks Department. And they are looking at preparing a new park impact fee, which will, an ordinance which will come to us, which will raise that. And again, back to council affairs, and I apologize, we had Fire Inspector Pillman and Sheila was in there, and we talked about the possibility of looking at the building permit fees with Ricardo and Joe going into January and the possibility of raising our building permits fees, which have not been addressed since 2008, Sheila?
Yes.
2008. We have not adjusted the building permit fees in Maryville. So there's literally money on the table that we could be gathering from these, all these projects we have coming into town. So we will take a look at that as a committee in the new year.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Back to Mrs. Neal, I just want to compliment you and the committee for the job you did this year. That was quite a beautiful tree lighting ceremony. And every year it keeps growing, so.
Yes.
Congratulations. Moving on to Department of Commission reports, Lake County Silo Waste Management District, Mrs. Neal.
Yes, thank you again, President Bella. The next meeting is on December the 19th at 6:30. And this is the meeting that was rescheduled from the month of November. So hopefully, we'll be able to have enough in attendance to have that meeting go. So I'll have some more updates probably at the end of the month when we have our meeting on the 30th.
Thank you. NERC, Ms. Hardaway.
Yes, we had a meeting on December 5th, and the bulk of the meeting was to approve the 2025 budget, which did pass once we reached the quorum. So that is what we did on the December 5th meeting.
Down to the wire.
Down to the wire, yes. And so our next meeting will be January, I believe, January 16th? Yes, January 16th is our next meeting.
There'll be some opportunities for Maryville?
Yes.
Budget?
Yes.
Grants? Excellent. Stormwater manager resources, Mr. Lake.
Thank you. Real quick, submitting all our documentation for recertification for our Tree City USA status to the National Arbor Day Foundation. This will be our 15th year, 2025. I'm also applying for the Growth Award, which we won last year. You can see it right there on the time capsule, and so we'll see if that goes through. And it's always good to get some recognition for the town. We had our orientation for our new board member, Jim Kandig. He has a construction background, and I think he'll do well. We're also renewing our CRS, annual renewals for that designation. That lowers flood insurance by 10% for all residents, and so we'll keep doing that. There's a lot of documentation you have to put together and submit to FEMA, and so for that, it's well worth it. And we have several projects in the design phase. This upcoming year, we'll be targeting, again, Little Cal for cost share. And then I want to go for some federal grants. I'd like to meet with Congressman Mervan to look at opportunities, federal dollars that can come our way to, you know, soften the blow up of the cost of these projects. They will be shovel-ready, so it's always favorable in that regard. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Matt. Fire Territory Board, Ms. Neal and Ms. Hardaway.
At this time, no report. We did have a meeting briefly. We were missing some members, so we will have an upcoming meeting, but the budget has been approved for 2025.
Good. Anything else to add, Mrs. Neal?
No, nothing else to add.
Very good. Department reports, Parks and Recreation, Lisa Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past Saturday, we had our first cookies in canvas. We had nine children ranging from five to nine paint snowmen on canvas. They enjoyed themselves immensely. We had some great pictures. We also had four children that were from 10 to 13 that painted genderbread houses. There again, they enjoyed themselves very much, and they cannot wait for the next one. Our next one will be January 25th, and we will be doing a paper flower craft. And we're also in the process of starting a coed indoor volleyball league. We're hoping to get it up and running by February 7th. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Police Department, Chief Nusis.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of November, we answered and responded to approximately 2,700 calls for service, just under that. That does not include traffic stops and whatnot. A lot of people that do pay attention or follow us on social media can say we've had a busy last couple of weeks. We've had kind of a weird phenomenon going on, but I will say that very proud of my officers. They've been very active and they've been very successful in apprehending bad people. All of our stuff has ranged from felony warrants that we needed, people that had felony warrants that we were able to take them into custody, to another incident where lives were saved as a result of quick thinking and brave officers, to even today, we had some people that attempted kind of doing a carjacking, and we took some of them into custody today. So we've been very busy and very active with keeping all violent crime down, trying to keep all crime down in the town. We're still focusing on all of our problem areas. One of the big announcements I'd like to make is, within the next few weeks, we plan on rolling out some adjustments that we are going to be making for the upcoming year. These adjustments are going to be, in order for us to stay effective and us to be proactive and be more streamlined, but one of the things I would like to do is I would like to have open communication with the public on this, to let them know exactly what we're doing. So there's no, you know, nobody is kind of out in the dark. I want transparency on it, and that way, I think that we can have a good and better working relationship with the public. So they can understand why we're doing it, and we can also share what we're trying to accomplish with this. I'm hoping for 2025 to have another meet with the cops type gathering like we had last year in 2023. Wanted to do them this year, but it was kind of difficult for us. But very interested in staying in touch with the community and trying to find out what everybody sees, if anybody has any problems, and what we can do to address them so we can all be one single unit. That's how we'll stay a great and safe community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Planning and Building Department, Sheila Shine.
Yes, Mr. President, just a couple of updates on projects that are going on in the town. The Amazon Building out at the Sanders, silos at the Sanders Farm has their occupancy. They have completed their interior remodel for Amazon for the million-square-foot building that's out there. Also, on December 6th, the BMV opened up right across the street here in Maryville. And between yesterday and today, Matt, 8409 Maryville Road, they started building an autism therapy office. So just a couple of updates on projects that are going on in the town. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I might add, being in the neighborhood I work in, Sheila, I noticed that the contractor for Penske is digging dirt.
Also.
At 98th and Georgia.
They have their permit, they've had it for a while, but they have their permit. They are starting, yes, sir.
Good, thank you, Sheila. Mr. King, anything else to add from the?
No.
Okay. Mr. Griffin, Town Manager's Report.
Can I ask Mr. King a question?
Please.
Mr. King, what is the status of the lights on Maryville Road?
They, they are working.
Okay.
They, they were working probably close to two weeks ago. So they, they told me 30 days, it was at least that, if not more, but they finally got them running.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, thank you. I've distributed to the members of the council and the clerk treasurer my monthly report. I think it speaks for itself. Unless there's a specific question, it'll be my pleasure to be seated.
Thank you, sir. Moving on tonight to general orders, we have a resolution, excuse me, an ordinance 24-46. This is a amendment modifying several provisions in the Personnel Policy Manual to clarify the language dealing with the holiday pay, creating a repayment for training requirements for persons trained in the municipal program for CDL, and adding language into the tuition reimbursement program to add the IRS cap, adding language related to the employer's contribution to any employee's health savings account, and creating a travel policy for the municipality.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
You have a motion, Mr. Pettit. Secretary recognizes Counselor Hardaway. Mr. Griffin, anything else to add to this?
Mr. President, no, this is first reading. We can actually go through this. This has actually had a lot of review. As you may be aware, the Personnel Policy Manual is an ordinance of the unit. It's actually ordinance 2-87 in the code. It requires the HR Director and the Town Manager to do an annual review. We did start the annual review, I would say, about March of this year. Then it asked, those suggestions have to be reviewed by the department heads. It did go through that. And then it's gone through two meetings of the Council Affairs Committee to refine it and do markup. And we believe that we've presented to you a fine work that will improve policies and not create undue burdens, and also refine policies where we haven't had them clear before, particularly with regard to travel.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, this is first reading, Mr. January, roll call, vote please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bella?
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance 24-47. It's an ordinance to amend the Maryville Municipal Code to revise by repealing sections 2-150 to 2-155 and creating new sections to incorporate the redevelopment law in force for Indiana particularly, including the provisions regarding the establishment of a redevelopment general fund and a redevelopment capital fund in the Maryville Municipal Code. I believe Counselman Pettit made reference to this earlier in the meeting.
Yes.
Motion to approve 24-47, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Pettit, with the second by Ms. Hardaway, for approval of ordinance 24-47 on first reading. Questions or comments from the council? Anything else to add, Mr. Griffin?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. January, roll call, please, on this first reading ordinance.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak? Oh, Lord, she's not here. Counselman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bella?
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries. Mrs. Yuzlak is with us tonight from Florida.
Yes. Hanging out with her brother, I'm sure.
Yeah. Moving on tonight to ordinance 24-48. This is an ordinance to restore and appropriate undersigned, excuse me, undersigned unreserved cash on deposit to the low-credit funded, ceded fund, and the motor vehicle highway restricted fund, and the lit public safety fund for costs unplanned in these funds. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Sheehan, thank you.
Second.
Second, Counsel Leona. Questions or comments from the council? Anything to add, Mr. Griffin?
Mr. President, this is an additional appropriation, and as you're aware, under IC 6-1.1-18, we have to have a public hearing. We will schedule that public hearing on this proposed ordinance for your December 30th meeting, and after that public hearing, the council can finally decide its disposition of this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from the council? Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Counselman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bella?
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, that motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to, tonight, to ordinance 24-49. It's an ordinance reducing appropriations in the annual budget for various funds pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-18 and Indiana Code 36-5-3-5 and all. I do want to point out that this evening, I was told that the section on the back, that's the total reduction for the CCD fund of $50,000 should be omitted. It's not necessary for this particular ordinance.
Mr. President, with your permission, I know you've not received a motion yet to consider this. We're also asking, it is unusual for us to do this, we're asking that if you'll suspend the rules and consider this at the same meeting in which it's been introduced, so after first reading, if that would be considered. We're asking that, as the Vice President, who is also Chair of our Budget and Finance Committee, revealed to you, we received what is the preliminary notice of the budget. It's sort of the pre-order before the order, 1782 notice. In order to inform that process better, we need to show that the council has taken the steps that are suggested or contemplated in this ordinance. And the ordinance is the way to do the reductions under state law, so we're hopeful that you will take the step necessary. As you can see, these are fairly routine. We've talked to the departments that are implicated with them, they've been informed, and they have no objections. So we're hopeful that you will allow it to be final action this evening so that we can report that to the Department of Local Government Finance within the 10-day period.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Is there a motion by the council with the removal of the $50,000 reduction amount?
Some moved.
Motion by Mr. Pettit?
A second.
Second by Counselor Neal. Questions or comments from the council? I would like some clarity on removing the $50,000, just for the record, either Michael
I realized earlier this evening in reviewing some documentation from the budget entry into Gateway, that despite the fact that the bookkeeper and I had proofread through everything, had seen the December tax collection entered into the system somehow, and there were a few glitches with Gateway this year, somehow when it was saved and presented at the end, that value was missing. So the number I had looked at as a final total at the bottom is actually increased because of this December tax collection coming in probably later next week. So there is no reason to reduce any unspent money right now because there is sufficient balance to finish the rest of next year's budget as well.
Great. Thank you very much for the clarity on that. Anything else from the council? Hearing nothing else, Mr. January, would you kick the roll call, please?
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Counselman Pettit?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bella?
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, that motion carries.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Pettit, with the second by Ms. Hardaway, to suspend the rules tonight to read ordinance 24-49 on second and final reading. Any questions from the council on the suspension? Hearing none, roll call, vote please, Mr. January.
Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Counselman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, that allows us to suspend the rules tonight to hear this ordinance on a second reading. The second reading would include the removal of the $50,000 reduction, similar to what we just did in the first reading. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Neal, second by Counselor Pettit, for approval on second reading of 24-49. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January.
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Counselman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, that motion carries, Mr. Griffin.
We thank the council. Thank you very much.
Moving on tonight to resolutions, we have Resolution 24-38. It's a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, concerning the holiday schedule for the calendar year of 2025. You will see it represents 15 paid holidays listed in order, starting with January 1st through December 31st.
Motion to approve.
Counselor Sheehan has a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments on the resolution? I have a quick question. Mr. Griffin, do we continue to need to do this every year? Can we have something in the Personnel Policy Manual that states that we can adjust it if the dates change because of a calendar?
The short answer, Mr. President, which is rare for me, is yes, we can do that.
It is rare, thank you.
I think they're listed, Mr. President.
They may be listed.
I'm not sure why we have to do this, is my question, so.
Yeah. We can take steps to eliminate that step.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, it's a simple resolution, a voice vote's fine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Moving on tonight to Resolution 24-39. It's a simple transfer of funds from the General Fund, Department 02. The amount is $7,300. Going into the Other Supplies Account, the amount is $7,300, and net effect is zero. And also, the General Fund, Department 7, reduction of $6,000 and an increase in the General Fund in electric and gas of $6,000, and again, the net effect is zero.
Motion to approve.
Counselor Neal, motion to approve?
Second.
No, you got the motion in there. I'll give it to you. Is there a second?
I second.
Oh, you did.
Shawna second.
So did you.
Shawna, Shawna, it's all, potato, potato.
It's all Shawna something, okay. Fair enough. Counselor Sheehan, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on tonight to a resolution twenty-four dash forty. It's a resolution authorizing a transfer to the Park Non-Reverting Operating Fund and authorizing temporary loans under Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash eight dash four. This was also referenced earlier tonight by Councilman Pettit. And I do want to verify the amount here. This is for the two hundred thousand dollar repayment. Is that right?
That is correct.
Section one of the resolution, Mr. President.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much. Appreciate it. Questions or comments?
Uh, Michael, or Mr. President to Michael, in section three, the amount of eighty-one thousand three forty-five borrowed for the court record perpetuation fund, where is that? Is it being paid back or are we?
No, Mr. President, we're asking for an extension of that particular loan.
Extension.
And the reason for that is, is that these were loans authorized by the council at the end of 2023 through 2024.
Okay.
We haven't worked out the details about that particular fund and we are not prepared to make a recommendation. So we're taking advantage of that provision of law that allows a six-month extension, and we're hoping that you will grant it.
And then that would also go along, Michael, with C, the balance of the Park Non-Reverting loan?
That is correct.
Four fifty.
That's correct.
That is correct.
So we're paying two hundred and extending the four fifty another six months.
That's correct.
Okay.
Would you like to make a motion for approval, please, Shawna?
Yes, I will. Motion to approve, resolution twenty-four forty.
Second.
Second by Counselor Neal. Thank you. Any other questions?
I do have a question. So in regards to section one that Mr. Pettit was referencing, did we have the actual authority from the previous resolution dated twenty-four, twenty-three fifty-one to actually take the money out of the Food and Beverage Fund? Because we didn't even have that fund at the time.
It doesn't matter where we pay it back from, it's our discretion.
Okay. All right, because when I read, when I read the twenty-three thirty-one, it basically specified that the money was going to come from the Parks Non-Reverting Fund.
We're paying it back.
I know, we're paying it back.
Yeah.
But we're taking it out of Food and Beverage. So shouldn't we, if at the very minimum, be transferring the money to the Parks and Beverage Fund and then repay it?
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
Mr. January, that's an excellent question. As you know, the Parks, the Food and Beverage Tax is actually a receipts fund, which is an unusual name for any fund. Generally speaking, they either have a name of a fund and that's that. So that fund is actually supposed to be an accounting fund for the receipt of those things. Also, that fund allows those proceeds to be used for park purposes, including capital but operations, as well as tourism. We're concerned about the way in which we finance the Park Non-Reverting Operating Fund. So we are restoring some of the money to that fund. Two hundred thousand dollars of the temporary loan that was originally six hundred and fifty thousand dollars came from the General Fund. So this is a source that can be used. It will go into the Park Non-Reverting Operating Fund, and it'll all be repaid from that fund just as the original resolution stated. So we're consistent with the accounting rules of the state of Indiana, even if the fund wasn't created at the time. And one of the reasons we gave pause is in consulting with the Dean and Barbara White Community Center Fund, excuse me, Committee and Park Committee. We had a conversation about, do we want to take a look at other sources that might increase the revenue to the Park Non-Reverting Operating Fund, use another source to help repay the balance of that fund? And that's why we're doing it the way we're doing it. So we're restoring the General Fund, we're going to get another six months to examine other sources. We have seen, for example, the Park Non-Reverting Operating Fund is likely going to end in a positive balance, which it did not do last year. And that positive balance, in part, is attributable to your office because you're watching the appropriations with us, so we didn't have an over expenditure. And our hope is, is that with the aggressive stance we're taking, doing new recreation programming, we're also going to get some additional funds when we finally settle with the Boys and Girls Club to get their lease finally signed by them. And that was just a delay on our part. Our hope is, is that there'll be other sources, we won't have to go back to that again, but we'll have to examine that. So I think it was wise that we took just a small bite this evening, but it is consistent with the accounting rules that the state has for us, and so I'm recommending your favor on this.
Okay. So just in regards, thanks for that explanation. I just want to make sure, and I know Mr. Bella, President Bella probably certainly agrees, is that we definitely want to continue to use the Food and Beverage Tax Fund to improve, give the residents something tangible that they can actually see versus just repaying loans. And Mr. Bella specifically mentioned that in our meeting, not in front of the public. So I just want to make the public aware of that, because we're not just going to use this, our intention is not to use it just to repay that. We want to find some other sources to repay these loans, and that's why we extended the timeout six months, just in case anybody had any questions on it.
Thank you. We all are in agreement.
I restate that as well. And I just want to add that to amplify what you're saying, Mr. January. The council president and I had a conversation about this along with the Vice President, and it's our feeling that we need to now, because we're starting to see significant money in the corpus of that receipts fund, to have a conversation about what the statute contemplates and what the council wants to do. I know I have some ideas, but I'm not a policymaker, I'm a policy executor. And so the policymakers really need to have an opportunity to talk about the source of that funding and all the possible uses, which includes some capital uses for expansions that have been talked about as well. So this really amplifies what you said, Mr. January, and I agree with the decisions that informed this particular resolution.
And now that we have a balance in that account, Mr. January, as you know, we also discussed having a meeting starting next year and putting together a spending plan.
Correct.
Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
I think so.
Mr. Griffin, we're going to pull the resolution twenty-four dash forty-one from the agenda this evening, is that correct?
Mr. President, yes. I conferred with the Clerk Treasurer, and we agree that we need a chance to review this, and we believe it'll still be timely if we're able to re-bring it back for the council's consideration at your last meeting of the year.
Excellent, thank you.
Do you want to just pull it, Mr. President? Do you want to make a motion to table it, or it's going to be on the thirtieth?
Mr. President, if there's no objection, simply pulling it without objection by the council will be sufficient. That will give us the most freedom to work on it, and if we believe that we can get it into a form that's ready for you, you have authority to decide what's on the agenda for the thirtieth.
Let's make a motion to remove it from the agenda tonight from consideration.
So move.
Counselor Sheehan. Mr. Pettit, you second?
Second.
Okay. I'll give us time to review it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I thank the council.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Moving on tonight to Board of Zoning Appeals and Large Gathering Actions. I'll call on Sheila Shine.
So, Mr. President, I have to apologize to the council and also everyone. I don't have the report for the special exception, but Greg is in the audience, and I'm going to invite him up to talk about it. I have the develop, that's.
Is this it? Miss Shine?
Sheila, please give us a background of what this is.
So I can give you a background on it. Greg Lord is with DVG, DVG team, and he's representing, he's representing the.
Drive and Shine.
Drive and Shine. And they are proposing to take the car wash that is presently now the Happy Car Wash at seventeen hundred West Eighty-First Avenue and turn it into a Drive and Shine. They were at the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they went through a developmental standards, which they were approved to do all of the upgrades for the car wash. And now they're coming this evening for special exception approval to allow them to have a car wash. The car wash is going, he will tell you the hours of operation, that they'll be open seven days a week. It is an inside car wash, it is heated, they have vacuums out front, they also do a, they use environmental safety water precautions, and they, that's about it. Mr. Lord.
Good evening.
I apologize.
Good evening, counsel. As Sheila mentioned, my name is Greg Lord with DVG Team in Crown Point. We are the applicant for this petition for special exception and representing the developer Drive and Shine. As Sheila mentioned, we attended the November twentieth BZA meeting at which we were recommended for approval for the special exception. There should be a project location exhibit in your packet. The site is currently the home of the existing car wash called Happy Car Wash. The site is on the north side of US thirty, just west of Grant Street. It's in between the U-Haul self-storage property and a multi-unit commercial building. At this time, you guys can take these or leave these, but I have some photos if you want to see what the existing site looks like.
Yes, thank you. Yep.
It happens all the time.
Yeah. No, it won't be the last either.
So those are just some general pictures of what the site in the existing car wash looks like. Some are viewing it from the east. The last page is actually just another Drive and Shine facility, just kind of for frame of reference, what their typical product ends up looking like. So the existing car wash business is not doing well, and they're intending to sell the Drive and Shine. So Drive and Shine is looking to significantly upgrade the facility with a new brick facade, add up to thirteen outdoor vacuums. Most of those will be in the front, some on the west side as well, probably rehab the pavement as well. So basically, give this thing a facelift and try to make it a successful business. You know, kind of as has been stated, you know, this is C-three commercial property, and there's already a car wash there. We're just kind of looking to upgrade it and continue to have a car wash. So we are here tonight seeking final approval from the council on the special exception. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Is a photograph here of the Drive and Shine, the one in Crown Point?
It is, yep.
Thank you.
What's your, you have like the crew, how they have a monthly unlimited service?
Yeah, they have, they have, yeah, they'll have the monthly membership. So you don't have to have that, but you get extra perks.
Is it the same? Is it higher or lower? Are you guys competitive?
Are you talking about like pricing? I think it's twenty-five or thirty a month at most of their locations for unlimited washes. A lot of their locations have indoor vacuum as well, this particular one. They have a small detailing section in the southwest corner that kind of sticks out from the rest of the building, that's going to get demolished. So this will just be a kind of standard car wash with drive-through car wash and outdoor vacuums only.
Okay.
Just because the space is limited.
Gotcha. What would be the hours of operation?
You know, Sheila put me on the spot with that one. I know Frank mentioned it last time. I think it, I want to say it's eight to eight.
It's eight to eight, Monday, yeah, I had it in the report. It's eight to eight, Monday through Saturday and Sunday too. So they're open eight to eight. And they'll go, and they'll have six employees per shift.
That is a maximum, that's what I told you initially. After further discussion with Drive and Shine, at this particular location, it's probably only going to be three.
Three.
Needed.
Okay. Now that's what you told me, Greg.
I know, I know.
Okay.
Counselor Chandler Felton, did you have a motion or any concerns with this?
No.
This is your district, I believe, right?
Yes, it is.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion for approval, seconded by who? Counselor Sheehan. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilman Pettit.
Mr. President, this time I'm going to declare a conflict of interest because the owner of Drive and Shine is one of my landowners at Lamar, and I have a fiduciary interest with Haji Greg, and I've talked to him about that. So I don't have a problem with it for the council, but I think, Ricardo, I probably need to declare a conflict of interest since they're one of my landowners.
You do.
Okay, thank you.
He said you do.
Okay. So Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
Five in favor, one abstained.
Extinction. Motion carries. Thank you.
So I do have the, Mr. President, I do have the report for the freestanding sign.
Okay.
The petitioners requesting a variance of use approval from section twenty-one dash one eighty-nine eight in a C-three highway commercial zoning district to allow a freestanding changeable illuminated LED message sign at seventeen hundred West US Highway thirty that will display current promotions. The two hundred square feet sign will have a forty square feet message center. The LED sign is necessary to improve visibility of the site for motorists and attract customers to the business in a crowded corridor along US thirty with numerous of businesses with similar illuminated LED message signs. Greg, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, the only other couple of things I would add is, just, yeah, obviously, there's, you know, tons of businesses on US thirty with LED signs, and visibility is very important to Drive and Shine. So the only other thing that I would add is, the sign that is in your packet is a preliminary design. We know the code requirements for the two hundred square feet, the LED can't be more than twenty percent of that area. And the only reason I bring that up is, I think the height, what you guys see there is twenty-five feet. Drive and Shine's still considering maybe making that higher, but if we do, we'll obviously come in with meeting all those code criteria I just mentioned, so Ellie.
So because the maximum size for the sign is two hundred square feet, so you would have to come for a variance for developmental standard if you went bigger.
We would not go over the two hundred, it would just, he might consider making it taller, but under the thirty-five foot max height, in which case it would get skinnier. So we'd still stay within all the code thresholds. He's just thinking about maybe making it taller or skinnier, so, or taller and skinnier. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Your motion for approval?
So move.
Counselor Sheehan, thank you.
Second.
Second by Counselor Neal.
Excuse me, yes.
Hope for comments. Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilman Pettit.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor, one abstained.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Welcome to town.
So our next petitioner is Kahari Steele. Kahari, could you come forward, please? Kahari Steele is the petitioner. The owner is George Nova Golder, and Kahari would like to have a daycare center to be located at eighty-three seventy-four Louisiana Street in a C-three highway commercial zoning district. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six in a C-three highway commercial zoning district to allow a childcare facility at eighty-three seventy-four Louisiana Street. Petitioner has six years of experience in elementary education and human services field. Little Legacies Academy LLC is a new company whose mission statement is to provide nurturing, high-quality, early childhood education that fosters academic, social, and emotional growth while supporting families through comprehensive programs, dual-language learning, and flexible care option. Little Legacies will provide early childhood care for children's ages zero through five along with extended services for children six to twelve years old. Based on the square footage, Little Legacy can be licensed up to ninety children. Little Legacy places a strong emphasis on kindergarten readiness while adopting a creative curriculum tailored to foster holistic development, equipping the children with essential skills for future academic success. The approach is used to create a well-rounded early learning experience. Additionally, petitioner submits that the establishment maintenance or operation of the proposed special exception will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety morals, and general welfare, and is in accordance with the comprehensive plan because the property and business will be regulated by both state and local laws ordinances, therefore assurance the safety of the patrons in and around the facility. The proposed special exception will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood because the property and business is in alignment with the purpose of those businesses already in immediate, with the, in the immediate area. The property has been approved as a daycare before. Adequate utilities, access road, drainage, and other necessary facilities are already in place. The location of the business allows adequate ingress and egress, which will minimize traffic congestion. The proposed special exception shall in all respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district which is it located, and there is a public necessity for the proposed special exception in that the establishment cannot exist without requested approval. The hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, with seven employees. The daycare will have a safe drop-off and pickup procedures for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Good evening, everybody.
I'm Ms. Steele.
My name is Kahari Steele. I am proposing a special exception approval from you all. I did go through the first process where I was approved, and as Ms. Sheila said, it was approved for a childcare center before. It is, the space is currently vacant, and it has been vacant for, I believe, close to two years. As stated, our hours will be Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., so I do aim to make it flexible for our parents and our families. Any questions? I don't know if I hit all of the points that you guys need, but any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Counsel, any questions for this petitioner? Mr. Pettit?
I'll start, Rick, since this is in my ward. Kahari, nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you.
Are you taking the entire building according to the floor plan?
I am not taking the entire building. Right next door is an adult day center, and that's Indiana Mentor.
Mm-hmm.
And they've been there for about 15 years. I'll be taking the south part of the building.
Okay, because the one showed three doors on one of your sketches.
Yes, so there are three doors on the side that I am, that I'll be on, but the two back doors will be mine. The first door, door one, is Indiana Mentor.
Okay. Is this where IDEM was before? Sheila, does that ring a bell? I think IDEM was in here. You said it's been vacant for about two years.
Yeah.
I think IDEM had an office over there a while back, so. Was there any remonstration, Sheila?
No.
No? Motion to approve, Mr. President.
You have a motion, Mr. Pettit?
Second.
Second, Leona. Any other questions or comments?
You already have a list of, you already have students ready?
I do, so I am generating leads now through social media, connections that I know, family, friends, and people who know me from early childhood education and elementary education. So we're getting those things going, but can't really do a lot without, you know, being approved through you guys and state approval, so I'm working through the process.
I appreciate you going through the process correctly.
Yes.
And then are mostly, are your teachers, they are early childhood certified or are they elementary?
They will have to be. They will have to be. We are asking for a CDA or higher.
Okay.
So we would like CDA, early childhood education, either associate or bachelor's at the least.
And last question, what sets your childcare aside from the rest of these childcare centers? Because there are so many popping up like roses throughout the town of Maryville.
Yes, yeah, there are so many, but I think that I am set apart because I take my job serious. I take my work serious. I've received plenty of coaching, and I am currently receiving coaching so that I'm able to stay ahead of the curve. We will also offer, as Ms. Sheila stated, we'll offer enrichment programs. I also have experience, in my elementary experience, I have experience with special education, students who need IEPs or 504 plans, so we will offer that. I know that a lot of childcare centers do struggle with children with special needs, so that's aside of the things that I have to offer. Outside of that, you know, just my experience, offering enrichment programs, STEM, social emotional learning, looking at the whole child versus just the basic bare minimum. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Hearing nothing else, Mr. January, roll call please.
Yes, sir. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Counselwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Counselwoman Pettit.
Yes.
Counselwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor. Welcome to Maryville.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Sheila. We have no old business or new business tonight. Open for public comment. Please state your name and address for the record, approach the podium, and we allow three minutes.
I'd like to start by thanking Steve and his guys for all the hard work that you do. I know that 73rd Avenue and Witscombe Corridor is quite a challenge, and just want to tell you how much we appreciate everything that you do over there. And as a Maryville change agent, we've talked to a lot of people in the community, and time after time, one subject comes up, and that's the subject of blight. People are concerned about property sitting vacant, sitting there being in disarray, having lawns being way too high. The thing is, is we have some very good ordinances, ordinances within the Town of Maryville Municipal Code to directly, to directly combat this. I would hope that we could do a better job at looking at that and maybe exercising those and putting those into effect and help with that. What was just handed to you folks is a quick list of five properties that we've identified as being blight. There's a little bit more information on there, but as a change agent, we would like to see some good come out of this. We'd like to be an advocate for change. We'd like to be a positive influence on this. Having said that, we offer our hand, and we would like to help solve this problem. If you'd like, we could give you a monthly update on properties, because we've noticed there hasn't been a lot of traction really in this area. And I think it really needs a second look and have something addressed here. This has been an ongoing issue in our town for quite some time. I think it's time we kind of get this under control. So once again, the Maryville Change Agency would offer its hand to help in any way we can to, to make the situation better, because we all want a better tomorrow for the town of Maryville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Poyant, 8031 Massachusetts Street. So I got a question for the town council. Do, do we have a code of conduct or code of ethics that we could have a copy of that the town or the council adhere to? And I know this is not a Q and A, but I'll follow up with an email with the entire council to see if you guys can get me feedback on this, and if there is a copy, if we can get it.
Sure, I think you already sent an email to Mr. Griffin, right? Did I see an email about this issue?
I'm not sure, maybe Brian must have sent it, or, yeah.
Mr. Massarch sent it.
Okay, yeah, we're aware of it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Massarch, 201 East 68th Place. I first would like to thank the Maryville Police Department. Apparently, Saturday night, a neighbor called the officers over to my house. Someone had gotten into one of my trucks. This was after midnight, and they were kind enough to shut the doors and lock it up and not bother me, so thank you, and thank you, guys. I appreciate that. I did send out an email requesting the ethics policy, the code of ethics policy. So as a reminder of that, also, one of, we had a meeting last night, one of the things is it's very frustrating when we don't have a single point of contact for certain items like infrastructure. There are a lot of things like streetlights, dead animals, potholes, et cetera. We'd like to look for a single point of contact or even some kind of form where things can be submitted and tracked. Like if somebody reports a streetlight out, okay, it's reported, and here's the update on that. Sometimes when we automate things, that's less for a human to have to worry about. A second email I sent out was in regards to a Q and A session. We recognize that, we've been told multiple times that there's no Q and A, but residents have questions, we have concerns. We would like to address our questions maybe in a different setting, possibly at the community center. And maybe it could be a little bit more friendly roundtable type discussions where we can get into the meat, because we don't always want to bring the flame, we want to be part of the solution. One of the things I'd like to point out in tonight's meeting is the food and beverage tax, repaying a debt. That's the first thing we're going to use that money for. We're, no splash pad, no new program, no new personnel, that, you know, no improvements to the bike trail and whatnot. That's, we should be thinking about spending that food and beverage money on the nice amenities that the residents have been begging for.
Yeah, we will, Brian.
And finally, while I appreciate the conflict of interest notification, when you have somebody who is the HR director related to a councilperson, and that councilperson is now voting on things, that is a severe conflict of interest. There should have been an abstention. So if the HR director wants to introduce a policy change for personnel, the, the councilperson who's related to that person should not be voting on that. Thank you. Everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Samuel Poyant, 407 West 89th Place. Good evening, everyone. So last meeting, we had ordinance 2442 in order to amend the wage and salary, establishing the wage and salary rates of elected officers. So there was discuss, there was, there was no discussion or public, public comment or ability for us to have a voice in that, and it just seems like with scenarios like that, that you're shutting out the residents, and it would behoove me to ask you all to listen to the public, and before a vote is called, it just seems like you make, you know, we don't want to make decisions without having the public having, have an option to voice your opinion. So don't want this to be a common practice. I, I would like to go back to that. I know there was discussion on that last time about how to progress forward as, as you all make decisions, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Bella? I have one quick question. Thank you, first of all, change agents, for your great ideas, and I wanted to ask Attorney Hall and Ms. Sheehan, in regards to this property, Emmanuel Church of Christ. How do we handle it when a non-for-profit owns a property and they've been administratively dissolved? How do we get that back on the tax rolls or into somebody else's hands that wants to use it productively? I'm just curious about that.
So this, you seem to be referencing a matter that was given to us just this evening?
Correct. It's Emmanuel Church of Christ.
Yeah, I'll have to look into the specifics of that, and that is certainly something that, that we'll, we'll, we'll address.
That's going to be my, my response.
Yeah, okay, that's really curious, right? Yep, okay.
Did you have a comment, sir? Or you just, yes?
I do.
Oh, come on, sir.
My name's Jason T. Whitaker. I live at 7466 Hendrick Street, Maryville, Indiana. For the past two years, I've been trying to get a hold of code enforcement. I've called approximately 20 different times and left a message each time, and I only received one pickup from the phone, and that was Ms. Vicky Benel. I commented that my residence doesn't have railing on my deck, and my, my landlord was on the deck, they were drinking, and they fell off the deck, and they damaged their eyes, the bridge of their nose, and, and their front teeth. I'm a carpenter by trade, and so is my parent, my dad. I've went, went to my, he's my landlord. So I've went to him numerous times about the safety of my home, and another thing that's happening is a violation of my AHA rights, and that has to do with me getting renters' insurance, and I've been trying to talk to my landlord about that, to distribute the proper funds for me, and they won't talk to me at all about that, because I've been having a lot of things get stolen at my house, like my precious coins, my designer jeans. What else has been stolen? My baseball cards that were worth $100,000. I had a LeBron James rookie card from Sports Illustrated that was worth $20,000. That was missing. My Playstation has gone missing. So I've called the police. About a year ago, I emailed the deputy here after, after town council meeting, and I didn't receive an email back. I called the police about eight weeks ago because there was a disturbance behind my house by the park that was, that was, it was, it was past dusk. It was, it was dark out, and there were people there, they were smoking marijuana, because I could smell it. So I went over there, I smelled the marijuana, and I didn't approach them because I didn't want to get in a fight. So I called the police. They were shaking bushes and shrubs in the weeds by my house, saying stuff to intimidate me, and I called, when I called the police, I ran outside to the front, and the police officer said, "Get the hell back in your house." Yeah, that's pretty funny.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief, would you mind hooking up with him after the meeting, perhaps?
Sure.
So for announcements, the RDC meeting will be December 30th at 6:15. The next town council meeting is December 30th at 6:30. That's the change due to the fact that the last meeting was scheduled for December 24, so we moved the, the date. If there's no objection, I will adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.